Okay, the town of Elon Town Council work session on May twenty third, twenty twenty two. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll take.
It just come right on up.
Hearing none, we'll close the public comment section.
Thank you.
I know, right? Next up, public hearing.
You can leave now.
Hopefully, we could break the six minute meeting record.
This is our hearing on our fiscal year twenty three budget, budget ordinance fee schedule and assignment of grades to classes. We're going to now open up the public hearing. We will now close the public hearing. To give it so much time.
I was gonna say that the only significant change was a lower than anticipated increase in healthcare.
That was a little bit of a surprise, huh?
Yeah, dropping from eighteen percent to three point four percent.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
It's a master negotiation.
Same plan, same carrier.
Negotiate that, nice job.
I didn't, I won't give credit for it.
That's great.
Oh, we do have one more person who's joined us.
So that saves us about thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's good work. It's mebbins. They still had a giant increase in their healthcare. So it's awesome that we were able to get it.
I don't know how it happened, but there were other people who were coming in similar and.
And everything stays the same?
Yeah, same plan.
Great.
That's great. Yeah, they dropped it from eighteen down to ten. And then when they found out there was additional companies bidding, they dropped it down to three point four. They just do it. Hundred, they're paying out about a hundred twenty five percent of the premiums this year. I don't get it.
Yeah. Well, they want to keep their business, maybe, I guess. That's really.
That's my two monitors.
Okay, so the other person left.
Can they testify or can they make a comment from the Zoom meeting if they want to? I hope they know that they can, so.
It's it's a Mary Harwood.
It's staff.
Everybody's staff.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's what you meant by American.
Okay, hearing now.
Let's see if she puts something in the chat.
No items for the public hearing, so we will now close public hearing. Next item is ordinances and resolutions. Before we go to those line items, Rich, can you tell us which of the three or of all of them you would like for us to take action on this evening?
Uh, definitely the two budget amendments. Budget amendment number four is to incorporate the money that was donated and allow us to spend it. So we get that process started. And budget amendment five is to authorize expenditure funds from, uh, actually. I have to do with the second one as well.
I was gonna say, it almost seems like we've got to create that.
Cause I gotta, we gotta create the fund in order to take the money out of the fund. Pay for the engineering on the waterline on East Hager. So yeah, if you could approve under five A, B, and C, that would be beneficial.
The chat comments are those just from Mary Catherine or?
She was asking, could I hear her? And I let her know it couldn't. I don't know if she was trying to say something.
Okay. All right, so letter A, a budget amendment number four, can you just give us a summary of that?
Yeah, as you at your last meeting recall that we received a donation of thirty thousand dollars for engineering services of the West College Plaza. You voted to accept it. What I neglected to do was create the budget amendment so you can incorporate it into the budget as a revenue and then spend it. So this this budget now will allow us to actually pay the money to AWCK to get that construction design done.
I just kind of figured it had to move in that kind of, I figured it had to kind of move in that order. We have done them concomitantly that last time.
We're gonna have accepted the money and then done the budget amendment, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Any comments, questions for Rich on that?
I'm with the acceptance.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Letter B, creation of grant fund for NCDQ water and sewer funding.
Yep. Recall when the when the state finally adopted a budget this past year, they included about two point four million dollars for the town of Elon for sewer water projects. Two point four came at the top. It was the item at the top of the list, which we listed as two point four million for the East Hager Waterline. So we had previously talked about using ARPA money for that. Because of how the state came up with that that funding to us, we felt it was cleaner to use state money for that rather than federal money. Either it all comes from the federal government through ARPA. So what I'm asking you to do is to create a grant fund because it's operated through the state water quality program. So it'll be a grant to us. This will allow us to start spending money and then be reimbursed when the money comes from applying to the state for the money.
Any questions or comments on that line items?
Also take typically to get reimbursed, just.
I don't, I, first time I've been involved in this.
Yeah, yeah. That's fine.
Usually it's it's not. Other places I've worked, it hasn't been that long. I don't, I can't attest to how how quickly it is here. They've got the money, though. It's usually what the holdup is.
I was just curious, is we put money out there, we wouldn't want to have it hanging for a long time? It doesn't sound like that's the issue, so.
I I don't think it'll be a significant length of time we would spend the paperwork and I, you know, if it was more than a month, month and a half, I'd be surprised.
It looks like on the attachment of that, that Emily would have to sign. Spelling error, I don't know if it matters. Says to a lot, but two point four as allotted by the state of North Carol, Caroline and not Carolina. We're sure we're gonna get the money. We're gonna be spending money that we're not gonna see.
It was earmarked in the state budget for the town of Elon. It's. I will, I will say as certain as I can be.
Sure. It being more.
Let's see now. Just gotta be one letter.
Okay, we'll take care.
So do I have a motion to approve with that one at it?
I'll make a motion for the resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
What does happen if it would have been signed with the spelling error, does it?
It does, it's fine.
And where is that typo?
It's in the body of the item.
Yeah. I believe it was typed by Neil Diamond.
Yeah.
All right, letter C, fiscal year twenty two budget amendment number five, East Hager Waterline.
Hey, now that you've created the fund for the money, I'm asking you to spend some of that money. We we have a, we had approved the contract with AWCK last fall for two hundred ninety thousand dollars, which would cover the design of the new waterline. All the, all the work along with it, construction administration, setting up the bid specs for construction, coordinate all that, doing the final inspections. This is a one contract that'll cover all the way through the end of the project for all the engineering services we'll need.
That's not gonna change since we already committed to it. They already committed to it too, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, there won't be any surprises, correct?
Any other questions?
I would move the acceptance.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, new business fiscal year audit services agreement.
Every year we have to seek audit services and we are. Proposal from Eki Loy at. Good with the name of the businesses. Kav Ezekiel Lawyer Company. Who've done our audits for several years. It was a little bit higher this year than it has been in the past as we're starting getting some of these federal monies. Potential we'd have to do what's called a single audit, which if you spend enough federal money, you'd have to pay extra for it, so. Asking you to send this to the agenda for next week and we can, and two weeks, we can certainly do it that way and approve it then, and then we'll get the audit scheduled.
I just have a question. How do, it it looks like the two go hand in hand.
They do.
Okay, so.
Got some good lobbyists.
It it used to be, it used to be you hired an auditor and the auditor would come in and do all your financial statements. And then provide the audit of those financial statements. And generally accepted Gatsby, John Alexander.
AP and generally accepted accounting principles.
That's GAAP.
Oh.
Gatsby is, I can't remember what, anyway. They set the standards for that and they they are slowly convincing states to change the standards so that the financial, financial reports are now done by somebody else. And then you have an auditor that audits those financial reports. So last year was the first year we ended with with two companies to do it. Cobb Ezekiel did the audit and.
Stout Stewart and McGowan.
Stout Stewart McGowan did the financial report.
Does it matter now since we're town council?
That's us doing this. We need to ask them and make that change.
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll move that to the regular agenda or consent agenda?
I I think in the past you've done one of consent. So I'm fine with that.
I don't see any reason.
All right, and you'll get that change made to town council? All right. Next fiscal year twenty two financial report services. I mean, I guess we don't have to look at that one separately because we just discussed it.
Yeah, I I mean, it's a different company. Stuart Stout McGowan. I'm glad it's not Stout Stewart. And Patricia, who who does the work, is actually doing some contract work for us now to help us get our books ready to be closed at the end of the fiscal year. So it's just kind of a separate agreement with her to come in and help us get all our statements done and 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 get things ready for her to do the financial reporting.
All right. Item to the consent agenda as well with any necessary changes from Board of Aldermen to Town Council. All right, moving on to reports. Let's start with our town manager.
I am pleased, very pleased, quite ecstatically pleased to announce that we are, I have hired Lori Oakley to be our new planning director. Lori is currently the planning and zoning administrator for Person County. She has about twenty five years of experience at the county level. She's worked for the town of Waxahaw and Hunterton, I think, at Hunter County. Now Person County, and she's also been in, worked for private developers, so she has a feel of both sides of that equation. And she is is looking to get back into, having sampled all three of those areas, she's looking to get back into local government as opposed to the county level. So she will be starting on June twenty seventh. She has a thirty day notice period and this works out with insurances and stuff like that for her.
Does she live in Person County or she?
She lives in Evan.
Oh.
So this will save her commute time as well.
Ecstatic news.
Yes, very good news. I I think, I think she's gonna fit in very well and I think you'll all appreciate her candor and oriented orientation details and. Another comment, and I I was running around trying to get the name of it, like wasn't able to locate the name, but I just remind everybody, music to dine to this Friday night. And you're coming, Mark? Okay. Cause I'll be, I'll be, I'll be staff probably the roadie tonight this week during setup and Mark's gonna come down as representing the downtown committee to help keep the peace and answer questions and. He says there's any trouble, there's any, he said, if there's any trouble, he'd be happy to run and go get help, so. That's what I'm looking for.
Where's the police?
That's right. We've, we've had a bunch of really good shows. Attendance is kind of solidified. We think of it, total attendance probably was pushing eighty last Friday night. People coming in and out, but it was a consistent sixty to seventy and people come and go. And and we've been doing between fifty and sixty probably most, most events. So it's starting to pick up some steam, I think, literally steam, because it was pretty hot Friday night.
So I know one got rescheduled to June tenth.
Yes.
I think the, is that the last one?
That's the last one.
Are we trying to book anymore in June or we just say no, it's too hot or it's not gonna do?
We were not planning on extending the the June dates. You know, if we had another rain, I mean, if we had a rain out, we might, but because they canceled, the June tenth folks said we can't do it. We were just gonna let it lapse. I think the sentiment is that it would be not very pleasant out there, sitting under the June sun. But they do pick up again, I think it's the third week in August and and the plan on scheduling them throughout into, well into October anyway.
So how's it any cooler the third week in August? It's gonna be in June.
Well, I can tell you as someone who has spent every Friday almost for the last two years that I think you'd still have a worthwhile crowd.
Yeah, I think you would. If the, if the entertainment's good.
Third week of June is things start to pick up again too, so things do get kind of sparse around here, at least my experience.
I think that was the other summer, the the crowds would be lacking as people are doing their vacation work after local schools get out. You know, it's, we might want to try it at some point. I don't know whether we could pull something together that that quickly at this point in the season. What is hoping to change?
And there's always Bill, right? He could just come play every Friday.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure when he's gonna be ready to come back and play.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
The group with this coming Friday, is that what you? David Digers and the cricket smile, dang it.
Thank you. Smiling.
Was there anything about a fire chief or is that still in process that announced it?
Yeah, that is still in process. We are, the la- last piece of the puzzle is drug screening.
Oh, so in other words, but the person, if they pass all those, everything is good, they're gonna probably move forward, okay?
So with any luck by the end of the week, if not. You know, depends on when the screening gets done and how long it takes to get the results back. As soon as that's done, you'll be hearing from me. Interviews for finance director this afternoon went very well.
Sounds really good. Nothing but quitting and then all of a sudden now we're getting nothing but hiring, that's good, so.
Sometimes the planets line up one way and then sometimes they line up the other way. It happens. That's all I've got.
All right, we'll start with Stephanie.
I'm just sorry I wasn't able to make the staff appreciation day. I ended up having to have some emergency oral surgery, so it ended up being more than a migraine. So anyway, I hope, I'm sure everything went really well and I'm just sorry I didn't get a chance to let all our staff know how much I appreciate them, but I'm sure you guys, I'm sure you all did that, though.
And tried, yes.
And the Ashley Woods neighborhood has all been taking pictures of the sign, sharing it thrilled, happy, so hopefully. We won't hear from anybody for a while. So thank you to everybody involved.
Have we heard from Kirkpatrick or anything?
Our attorney talked to their attorney, seemed to think things were okay. I received a phone call, heard it. My phone call, so either he's now clear on the process and. I guess for what it's worth, one of the explanations is that for our our driveway permit process or the way we give permits for people to work in the right of way, because they apply, they're given a verbal go ahead. They do the work, we go out and inspect it and then we issue them the permit. So my, that was my misunderstanding that we issued the permit, so then they do the work, it's the other way around. So there was some confusion over exactly what step by step was supposed to happen. Public Works was talking to them, I was talking to them. Lack of a callback, I I I feel that, all right, understands the process now, has the ability to build up to, you know, connect to our road and. I said, you know, I've instructed Sam, I said, you know, and if that, if that's the process, then we'll be good neighbors and take the sign down till the work is done and put the signs back up. So that we'll deal with it that way. And ultimately it's up to the the council of Elon, the town council of Elon, to decide whether that temporary injunction, if you will, stays in place or disappears at some point.
I know we talked when this was all going on that might be to look at our ordinance with that and how it's written. Is that something that we still need to do? Or have we settled it with just being like, well, we can do this now, we can temporarily close a road? Or do we need to look at how our connectors to road ordinance is something more than a dropway permit?
Well, we, I I think we do need to take a look at our, our, the permits that we issue through Public Works in terms of doing work within the right of way. And making sure that all that is clear. As far as the ability to connect roads or connect two roads, that, you know, that's a much larger issue. We will probably see another project adjacent to land in Elon that will be looking to connect to existing dead end roads. Will have reviewed and approved projects on both sides of that dead end. So I hesitate to say we need to adopt an ordinance clarifying when we allow roads to connect because some of it is case by case. But certainly, particularly with within town limits. I think the, the, I think the planning profession and the design profession and the public safety profession feel that those connections are valuable. So I don't want to create a sense of, you know, we we don't want these connections to happen. And clarifying that it's, you know, between communities, it might be a different issue than, as it has been, that it is within the community. Because we do have say of what happens on both sides of that, that connection that we don't have when it crosses town lines. But so the answer to the question, yes, we do need to fix and clarify our driveway permit, encroachment permit. Public right, you know, right of way permit, whatever you want to call it, clarify all of that so that it is clear when people need to get permits, when they don't.
Yeah, I'd hate to have this situation happen again, something that we have experienced to try to figure out a better way to navigate than we did this past time.
Well, I don't know where these new neighborhoods are gonna come, but what's the neighborhood that Bill Falcon lives in? Where Michael Woods lives?
Cable Square.
Square. I believe that there's some dead ends. There's some dead ends there. That neighborhood is not designed for more traffic. I mean, those roads are way too narrow, you know, and sure, we, we approved that, but hopefully we learned better.
Well, and I'll say you've also just approved a conditional zoning change for a piece of property that butts that subdivision. So part of, I think, what, as I said, some of it's case by case. When you're doing a review or with a pony board or you folks are doing the the review process. Under, there's a need to understand where traffic is headed. If you take that project, if that's, you know, connecting to Cable Square. My question would be, who in that project is gonna drive through Cable Square?
Versus just driving out there.
Versus driving out the neighborhood. Who Cable Square might be driving through the new neighborhood to avoid going out to the light on the university. So it could be that the the generator traffic in a situation like that is existing subdivision, not the new one. So, you know, that's I'm saying, it's the changes, traffic, it changes direction of traffic flow, perhaps without changing the volume of traffic. That's when you need to look at these on a case by case basis. When we are, when we are the approval authority, pretty on both sides, we have the ability to do that. When we're not the approval authority, we don't have the ability to do that, to say, oh, this is, this is, this is amount of traffic that's gonna be generated that's acceptable to to our community. So that's why I say there's a difference there and I I wanna. I would like you to keep that in mind that we're talking about two different scenarios. Because I can't think of a project that I've ever worked on that connected to an existing project where people were not showing up concerned.
Right.
And you really have to look at the the merits of the arguments pro and con and the benefits pro and con in terms of, you know, public safety, for instance. Do you shave forty five seconds off a fire response by taking a new access point? You may. Is that worthwhile? Well, you know, you, the argument as well, if it's, if it's your husband or wife having the heart attack, probably is worth it. It's not, then, you know, maybe you don't want the, want that connection. Those are the things you'll need to look at within the context in that case of, you know, our zoning licenses.
What would the, what would a process look like for us to clarify the easement, the driveway permits? Would that be like in a work session? We would do, we would go something like that?
I, well, I guess the process would be initially staff would would put something together to try and make sense out of it. I mean, we've heard the concerns and in and that would be clarifying it not in terms of connections, but in terms of our permit process. So what makes sense for, what makes sense for us for the way we, which we regulate our right of ways? We could go back and look at our our codes, draft changes, and then it comes back to you folks to take a look at and vote on ultimately our changes you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
We approve another neighborhood, I thought we just approved conditional zoning.
You approve conditional zoning.
Okay, but we haven't approved a new neighborhood to put up the cable square yet. They haven't.
That property butts to Cable Square.
But we haven't approved that yet.
Approved it. It is, they've applied and then they're going through TRC right now on on the conditional zoning plan that will go to the board, go to the pony board and then come to you folks. Sometime this early summer, I think.
Did you have items on your report?
Yeah, so I did make it to the last music we got to, so I stayed away for graduation, but hopefully it was a good turnout. You said it was.
Yeah.
Was there?
No graduation traffic.
No graduation.
All over and they've all gone to Key elsewhere.
Oh, wow.
It was all, I mean, last year, gray matter, I think, turned out a big crowd. A lot of people come to listen to them. Talking to somebody, is there walking out, they wonder how great the music was and so, well, yeah, come back next. Oh, you do this more than once?
That's awesome.
So, so it turned out to be a good night for gray matter because they brought out a crowd that we didn't have natural population hanging around the game.
But I'm glad it turned out well. The luncheon was put together well, thanks Diane. Doing it. Doing it. Emily spoke, so it was nice. It was different, right? You know, the couple I've been to has been with Tali. Gets right to the point, so there's some charisma and there's a little roasting involved with talking about some of the recipients, so I I enjoyed that.
What you're saying is that I wasn't to the point.
Yeah, I mean, it it was, and I think I heard some of the staff members, so this is like some one of the best ones I've been to. And so it was nice. And then also Emily pointed out to me, she took a picture, we have trash cans now in downtown. I mean, just adds to the fact that we have our first arts council committee uh, committee meeting starting up again in June. But since Jill's been here, she's been, uh, you know, moving and doing things, so I I appreciate having her with our downtown. It's it's nice.
I I said to Jill today, I was like, I'm so impressed that you got the trash. She was like, oh, I didn't even know they were out there. So it wasn't Joe.
Who was that?
That?
Was that you?
Public Works.
Public Works.
Well, we we tracked down the order finally. And and Donnie is his his work to get it delivered and.
Well, thank you, Donnie.
And installed.
Where else are they?
Those are, those are the first. At the price of commercial grade garbage cans, that was all that the the budget had fluff for, part of the term. So we we haven't planned additional ones. Like, we had talked about it some just once, I'd have to go back and check with Donnie and on what resources look like for next year.
That, thanks again for putting the budget together. I think we're looking good moving forward into this fiscal year.
Randy?
I'm working as of late, and by the way, I'm sorry I missed all this. I was out of town almost last week, but looks like there was some good stuff that happened. I want to thank you for all that. But I'm really focusing on and approaching people about the sustainability committee now. And so that's gonna be a committee that I'll be working with, and so I'd like to make sure that gets gets up and running as soon as possible. And so I've been working, there are several people at Twin Lakes, I think, that might have some experience, you know, we have some very we have a good brain trust over there, so it might have some good experience, and so there there's been some calls to to do a special invite there, and I'm gonna do that. But I've also been seeing some others, and I know you were starting to hear a couple more names, so hoping that that starts to show up very soon. So that's what I'm focusing some energy on right now. Yeah. Thank you for that. Getting ready for summer activities as well, so thanks. Arbor's Market's going, seems to be going pretty well.
The banner will be back up this week.
I thank you for that. Thank you very much for that. I wasn't sure how to thank you for that, but I will publicly thank you for that. That that text was, that kind of, because that upset me and and but you 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 kind of eased the eased the pain a little bit.
We we just collected the the banner, we we tucked away for safekeeping.
Thank you.
I'll go put it back up this week.
I do some new posts, those thing, those things are very use, so thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, yeah, and I want to apologize for not making the last meeting and the fourth employee appreciation lunch, and I I really hate I missed it, it sounded like it was a great time, but I'm apologizing for why I was gone. I was on vacation. It was fantastic, and I enjoyed it, and I recommend everybody do that. Get away, go find, go find your happy place. Wild younger.
Not suggesting go enjoy snow in May.
But it was fun, though. But yeah, last week was fairly busy. Obviously, we got started back with Pam, started back on the LMO. There was a good participation on that meeting, and you know, we're slowly getting back into the grind and trying to get some things completed. Hopefully, we'll have something presented back to the board. Supposed to have had our VG MPO meeting, transportation meeting, and that's got moved to tomorrow, so maybe next time I'll be able to report on that. Rich and I both got a chance to participate in the STIP webinar. Uh, that was enlightening, right?
Sure.
Even more way after you got out of that than you did before, don't you? And the other thing was also Rich and and myself and our officers got to participate in the two thousand twenty two Alamo County Fallen Officers Memorial Service. And if you've never had a chance to go there, it really is somber to see all the the fallen soldiers, I mean, fallen officers who have who've died in the line of duty since like eighteen seventy. And more more disturbing was they announced the ones in North Carolina for two thousand twenty one. And I thought that list was never gonna stop, and it just makes you realize how how blessed we are that we didn't have to recognize anybody as a town for have lost an officer, and I hope we continue that streak, but I was well attended. Detective Peters was on the color guard, Chief Blackwater was there. So Officer Jenkins and maybe some others, but it was well attended by all municipalities and maybe one day we'll get a chance to host it as a town. We'll see.
I I think the location is usually, I think they rotate around, but maybe they have it down there, but. Well, they they rotate who hosts it, but I thought my misunderstanding, I assumed it was always at that memorial.
Yeah, I think they, I think they rotated whoever leads it, but okay. Maybe the location, but I did have a couple of questions, obviously. What's the work being done on Walker Road? One of the citizen asked my daughter what they're doing along Walker Road. There was construction signs, and he wasn't sure what that had to do with.
I don't know.
That's one thing. And then the other thing, where do we stand on getting rid of the orange barricades downtown?
We talked about. Uh, the ones on North Williamson, we have an application into DOT for an encroachment permit. That will allow us then to to take out those barriers, put in a curb line from planted planted box to planted box, I guess, and construct the the platform there. So they the work's finally been done. It's at DOT waiting for the encroachment permits. We can actually go in and do the work.
Good.
Yeah, get rid of the ones on college.
I can't get rid of the ones on college until, you know, put something else there.
That would be part of the development.
The plaza, right? Uh, we've, we, the arts committee has talked about trying to to paint them. The outside DOT will not let us, the outside, side facing northwards, and DOT won't let us paint because they're orange for a reason. So you'd be painting the inside, which is not necessarily the face that everybody's worried about, right? So.
Do we have a timeline for the plaza?
You have to.
Is there, I know that we have to do a design, but is there any chance of it being done this summer?
Probably not this summer. I mean, the design is gonna take a little while to get done. And then we'd have to go out to bid for construction. It'll take a little while to get get the contractor lined up. And then we really need to decide, get an idea of how long it's gonna take, and then figure out, all right, do we just go ahead and do it and downtown users are just gonna have to deal with the construction, or do we wait until the use of downtown drops off? You know, if it's a, if it's a three month project, you might have to be inconvenienced. If it's a two week project, you know, do you do it on a on a school break or something like that? Some of that will come from the 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 design and the actual bids to build it. That's all I've got, Mayor.
You know, speaking of the West College Plaza, we had a meeting this past week or last week. Downtown Advisory Committee, Jill's doing a really good job with that, and it's exciting, the stuff that we're looking at doing potentially there. I I've said it many times, but I think this can be a game changer for our downtown to really start some things going. Really good area there. As Rich said, it's not an overnight thing. We got to get the plans and stuff done, but the university clearly by their donation is on board with it, and that helps to have that support for sure. And just, I'm really happy to hear you're making some headway with personnel stuff. Yes, but you've done a great job since being so shorthanded. So in budget time, too.
I I will say, thank, thank you. It is, it is everybody has had to step up, you know, everybody's taken on something that they weren't doing previously. And it's it's been very helpful to have such an engaged staff and people willing to step up, so.
That's good to hear.
That's all I.
All right, well, I had the pleasure of meeting with Mitchell Whitley of Mitchell's Mayors, who has made it a goal to write a book. I'm following interviewing all five hundred and fifty two of the state's mayors, so he is about a fifth of the way through. It's a long way to go, but it was nice to show him and his father around yesterday afternoon. So that was nice. I did miss the LMO meeting because I was in Chicago and developed a stomach bug while there. So that made for a really fun trip and had to miss out on my favorite restaurant because I couldn't eat it. And but so I hated to miss that, but I knew they were in good hands, so I was asleep. I'm trying to think what else. It was a great time at Music to Dine to. I definitely expected there to be a lot of graduation crowds, and it just wasn't the case. I do know that our businesses and said that their sales were down significantly compared to what they normally see when there's a Saturday graduation. So it might just be something worth talking to the university about. Not sure why they changed it to Friday, you may know, but
They've done that for a few years now.
But they said that it it really drastically changed what they had expected, because typically on a Friday evening before a graduation, it slammed, and I mean, it was pretty dead.
Well, they got slammed on Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, that was just some of the feedback that they had shared.
Graduation's changed quite a bit, yeah.
So, but I think that is it.
One last comment, a couple of you mentioned staff appreciation. On behalf of the staff, I will say thank you all very much. That allowing that to go forward, the sentiments that were expressed. I've heard from quite a few staff people that that was a a very nice event, one that somebody said, you know, the best one that they can remember, and I've heard that a couple more than once, that that was good food, but it was a nice, nice ceremony, and they appreciated it.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
We'll beat the six minute mark.